I'd like to call the Township of North Huntington Board of Commissioners, Special Meeting for Thursday, November 12, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Roll call, Manager Silka.
Commissioner Stumpf.
Here.
Commissioner Atwood.
Here.
Commissioner Blasco.
Here.
Commissioner Zona.
Here.
Commissioner Bevan.
Here.
Commissioner Goss.
Here.
Commissioner Haigus.
Here. Could everyone please stand rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any residents who are interested in speaking tonight, if you could please sign the book of the podium? Thank you. First residence, Maria, if you wanted us to come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please?
I am not a direct resident of North Huntington. I'm actually here at the request of many of your residents. I own an animal control facility, and I'm a little new, but I also own a nonprofit 501(c)(3) rescue. I don't know how much research you did on your current provider prior to hiring or current tactics, but the majority of the animal control facilities are no-kill. I am, or not no-kill, I am no-kill. I am 24-hour pickup. I charge $75, you guys pay 90. Your contract is for 515, I'm 500. One of the things about 24-hour pickup, which is a big deal, is I don't know how many dog owners are here tonight, but if you get home at 5 o'clock and your dog's been out since 3:00 and closing hours for the facility are 4 o'clock, you're not getting your dog till the next day. Now, if this is on a Friday, then you're not getting your dog till Monday. A stray hold is only three days. Your dog is now dead by Monday, and there's no way for you to do anything about it. You can't get through, you can't go in and see. So, when we started ours, I decided to make it 24 hours. I don't look at the animals as if they're property, I look at them as their family, and I can only imagine a person being grief-stricken, wondering if their dog is alive or dead, and then knowing their dog is safe and being able to come get it right away. Our sister rescue is TJ's Rescue Hideaway. We have been a nonprofit for a few years. We predominantly take strays, many from this area, though we are not, have the contract. People call in, and it's kind of hard to tell them no when they have fear of what the alternative would then be. I am not saying that the competitor is not effective in his means of retrieving the dog and removing it, but that is outdated. You now rescue the dog, rehabilitate the dog, vet the dog, and match the dog to the proper family that will then not rehome the dog because they match up. I am a dog trainer, I've been a dog trainer for 10 years. I specialize in aggressive behavior and convincing the dog that this is not how it is to conduct itself. I was not very prepared for this, this was very last minute. I usually have a very nice pamphlet, and I hand out and smile, and everyone asks questions. So, off the top of your head, if you have any questions, I certainly have an answer. Anyone, don't be shy.
I mean, the way our contract with our current provider goes through the end of the year, and we can put a bid out for next year, and if you're interested in putting a bid in, we will be able to take a look at your company at that time.
I would actually, was hoping to be able to sit down and come in and meet with you before you get ready to put the bid, just so you could have a little better data, looking at some of our numbers, you know, our 100% success rate. So, I was hoping that maybe if I called tomorrow, we could set that up over the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, you probably get in contact with Manager Silka, and we can either set something up to meet with us, or you can provide him information, and he could get it to the board.
Yeah, because I went over your contract back and forth. I mean, there is nothing stopping you from entertaining the ideas of an alternative. So, I thank you for your time, and we'll go.
All right, thank you. Next residence, Dave, if you could come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Dave Baylog, 1060 Legger Road. Many of you guys might remember me from the last meeting, we had the cat house issue on Legger Road. I've been in contact with Eric and Josh. According to Josh, he told me there was a 30-day, well, I think somebody here had mentioned it too, there was 30-day notice that had to be given. According to Josh, it was given September 30th. There is still no resolve on this house yet. You guys, I have heard him talking, many of you have went past it. You should have, Eric, you've been there, you should have came Saturday and Sunday when it was nice out to get the full effect. Cold weather, obviously, it's not baking the piss and the shit in the house now, but it is, it's terrible. It was absolutely terrible having to live there. I have a one-year-old grandson, can't even take him out in the driveway to play with him in the yard because it's just, it's terrible. I have had two people there that I've caught. One was a listing agent, and her son were going to list the house, and her son was going to clean it out. After talking to them for five minutes, they didn't realize, they were in the house, and they changed the locks, and they didn't realize what they were, the full detriment of what they did. And I says, "Take a look at your pant legs, guys." They looked down, there was thousands of fleas on them. They were jumping around like they were on fire trying to get these things off. I mean, this is, this is a serious issue. I don't know if, you know, people are taking this serious or not, but something needs done. I've been quoted in the Tribune that I will take this house down at my expense. Now, I have some serious backing in this township, and I'll put his name out there now. I have AJ Brenzel that is willing to donate his time and his equipment to come and take this house down. Something needs to be done here ASAP. From my understanding, the, Matt Jacobs, the person that resided at the house, was arrested. There was 65 second-degree felonies, I believe, and nine third-degree felonies. He was arrested, taken in front of the magistrate, and released. This piece of garbage has an inch-and-a-half-thick binder of stuff against him. How this is even possible in this township to release this scumbag back into our community is beyond me. Beyond me. If I went out and killed somebody in a car accident, I wouldn't see daylight for a long time. How he can get away with this, killing these animals, is, I'd just sever my head. I don't understand this. So, I'm asking you guys now, the 30-day window is up, does anybody have any kind of input on to what is going on with this property?
Manager Silka, you know where we stand on the property?
Okay, it was 30-day notice that they didn't pick up, then they were actually cited through the magistrate, which is our, which is our process. Our engineer has looked at the building, the code enforcement, that there's not structural damage, there's not an emergent situation. And maybe, Bruce, if you want to check into where we stand with this. And also, I can say that, you know, the bank has hired a firm to maintain the outside, to seal it up, and once they, they're going through the final foreclosure process, once the bank fully owns it, they have plans to fumigate it and clean up the inside and put it on the market. We did verify that over the last three days.
Yeah, there, again, so there's a couple of different avenues that are being explored. One is through the police because I believe there's criminal charges pending against those that are responsible for the criminal activity. Secondly, there's a citation pending in front of magistrate Congaware. I'm not sure if a hearing date has been set yet, but that will take place at some future date here in the near future. In there, there's the notices of violation, and they're going to move forward to cite them for those violations. The engineer tells us, I think the engineer is saying, what I can see in the letters that I reviewed, that the structure still is habitable if it's cleaned up. It's not structurally unsafe, so that, you know, to proceed with a condemnation on the basis of it being unsafe might be a stretch. I believe the cats are gone, and I think what we, what we have left there are the fleas and the smell. And I, I think you can read into the fact that there's a real estate agent involved, and now that we've gotten word, I think this just came through within the last couple of days, that the mortgage company has some interest in this property. To clean it up and then sell it is a good thing. So, I don't know what more you can do at this point. Proceed with the citation and proceed with the criminality part of it, but as far as tearing it down, I don't think that, that's realistic at this point. It's coming on to winter. I would think the flea situation is going to diminish at some point, especially since there's no cats over there. But I certainly appreciate what you're saying, that it must be an awful situation. We've had other situations like this in the township, and none of them are ever any fun.
Well, I'm sure nobody had to live next to the shithole.
No.
None of you have to deal with this.
You're right.
Day in, day out. As far as structurally sound, you can have anything structurally sound as long as there's not a hole in the roof with water damage. If I can educate you on a second, on a piece of plywood, you can dump a piece of water on this plywood. It is going to saturate through the plywood and anything underneath of it. If you guys aren't aware of floor joists that run through a house, that is all wooden as well, and it is soaked into these floor joists. To make it habitable again, it would need torn down and rebuilt from the block back up. I'm not sure if the ignorance is going on here, or it's trying to be swept under the carpet. This is absolutely terrible. This is, this is sickening is what it is.
When I went over to that house, I peered through the windows, and I was with Mr. Baylog, and I'm going to tell you, there's holes in the floor. Substantial holes to the point where a human being could fall through the floor. And I saw the wood, and the wood is saturated with urine. You could even get close to the windows and smell it. I'm going to disagree. This place is not habitable, and if you really want to do this house...
The only thing I guess we can do moving forward, I appreciate your concern, and we're here to try to help you. No one's trying to sweep anything under the rug.
It's not concern, it is anger at this point.
I understand.
Extremely, extremely.
But what Solicitor said, if, our township engineer says it's structurally sound, I mean, the only thing we could do is request him to go back and take another look at the house, but...
I want a second opinion.
Well, I think what you have to remember is, we have no authority to go inside the house. I mean, if you, we go inside the house, really, if we go on the porch...
You do have authority, you can call that bank and get authority.
Excuse me, sir. Sorry, sorry, I'm not arguing. What I'm saying is, you know, we don't have authority to go, we don't even have authority to go on the porch because that's trespassing. And so, we have to make our, our look from the outside. If there's holes in the floor inside, if the building's structurally sound, if it's secured, that's not an issue because then you'd have to break the law to go in and submit yourself to those dangerous conditions. We have to, I mean, it's a very sad...
What did you just say? Dangerous condition?
If you...
Excuse me, sir, this isn't a debate, we're here to hear your concern.
If you, if you go into the house, which you, which the property owner has the right to go into, nobody else has the right to go into. What you have, I mean, we're on very, a slippery slope of, you know, when you take someone's property and tear it down, we have to make sure that we have the full backing of law and in public safety, you know, in our side. This isn't something we can do flippantly. That's why the house we, at the public hearing, it took two years to go through the process to get this one tore down. And that's why we're, you know, if there's, if there's a plan in place, if the bank says, okay, it's, you know, it's unsalvageable, we'll tear it down, we'll do something, then they can do that. But as of right now, and I think what the Solicitor said, and we've been extensively on this, is that we don't have the probable cause to condemn this house at this point and demolish it.
First, you were able to obtain a search, or a search warrant for the house, right?
For cats.
Okay, for cats.
That was a criminal.
You can't, you can't get a search warrant to find it, to deem it structurally sound. You can do that, I'm sure you can, because this is a danger, right?
No, I, if the, if the structure can be sealed off, then what's inside the structure is not accessible to the public. And that goes under the building codes also, that that's, if you have a dilapidated structure, if you seal it off, seal off the windows, seal off the doors, you know, that's, then anybody who, you know, enters inherits their own risk.
Let me say this to you, I mean, I appreciate the fact that it smells and that it's a nuisance to you, it's terrible. Fact remains is, you know, you're talking about taking somebody's property without due process, and that, that starts to raise issues. I've been involved in townships and boroughs where a community goes in and does just what you say, and says to the next-door neighbor, "Tear it down, it's okay, we won't worry about it." Two years later, the owner shows up and said, "What authority did you have to do that? You know, where is it that you said, where is it that your engineer said it's structurally uninhabitable?" And without that, we're not going anywhere.
Absolutely. So, that brings up the other point where you need to have him take him back out there and reevaluate it.
We can do that.
Not just looking at the siding on the side of the house.
We can do all of those things. Here's our problem too, we've got a bank that says they're interested, and that really starts to...
I understand they're interested, but there's still nothing being done about it. How much time do you give them? I was told...
I agree, I agree.
$1,700 a day fine, being levied, that can be levied against this company for not doing a thing. You guys are letting this happen every day, I have to deal with it, nobody here does. $1,700 a day, start putting fire on them then. If this is the, if this is their resolution, they're going to steal the house off, get it done. Why am I waiting this long?
Welcome down to Justice Congaware and tell them to schedule.
Why do I have to do that? I'm standing in front of you guys.
We did file the citation, we, sir, we filed the citation. We're following the course of law, we just, we just can't go and do it because it feels good. We can't tear, we can't take somebody's property and demolish it. We filed, we filed the citation, they issued the citation, they have, they have a statutory timeline to respond back to the judge, and then he, then he sets the hearing, then he, he levels the course of action. That's, that's the way it works.
Jeff, can we maybe reach out to the bank and say, in order to maybe preserve the property, if they hope to sell it, that maybe they'll want to invest in an exterminator to go over there and do something to mitigate that issue?
Are they going to have to do that?
Yeah, well, what they have to do is, they have to get the foreclosure process completely, and then that's coming to an end, so they're in the foreclosure process before they can go in and remove the contents. That's their, that's the, they can't remove anything out until the foreclosure process is done. The bank is processing it.
They have the same problem.
Again, just putting them on notice that despite, other than just landscaping issues, that they might have another issue that's, if they're willing to hire, because again, it's up to the bank whether they want to invest money into the house or not, but that might be a way to get a better return on their income, just to give them a...
We can, I mean, you know, we can contact the bank to try to, you know, get them to move a little faster.
And, and a bank doesn't have to officially finish a foreclosure, they can go in and take possession under the terms of their mortgage.
Right.
And then they can be held liable for whatever needs to be done, and there should be a call made to that bank, the asset manager.
So, what I've heard so far is, winter time is coming, the fleas are going to die, the smell's going to go away, and now it's in the magistrate's hands. Is that where, is that where I stand at?
Sir, I understand your frustration, but the board here is trying to help you.
You can't understand my frustration unless you've lived it, trust me.
I know, but we're trying to help you, and I understand you're frustrated and you're mad, I get that. The board's trying to do what we can through our legal means, we're not going to go outside those legal means. So, what we can do is, we have your information, we'll keep you informed of what's going on, and I know it's probably not going to be in the time manner that you want, but we can't just go in like the Solicitor said and the Township manager and tear it down because we see fit to do it, we have to work in within our legal constraints.
Let's get off the tear-down issue, do what you guys said you were going to do, start levying the $1,700 a day fines towards these son of a bitches.
I'm not sure where you're getting $1,700 a day fines.
Josh.
But we filed, the citation is in the magistrate's office, that's, that's where the fines are levied. It's now up to him to levy those fines.
Is the bank understanding that there is a seven, that there is a daily fine against us? Whether it's $1,700...
Well, you know what, regardless, the, we don't levy fines, the township doesn't levy fines, we file a citation, the magistrate then holds, holds a hearing, and then they, just like any other judge, determines the fines.
You can say it's $25 a day.
It doesn't matter.
Oh, I understand, but you're blaming us, go talk to the magistrate, because he sets the fine.
So, you're telling me that's my next course of action, I have to go talk to this magistrate?
Well, it's not your next course of action, you're trying to get something accomplished. Go down there and ask him, what's he going to do on fines?
I don't understand, this is where I'm confused at, maybe I'm ignorant on this. I thought there was a, a process set forth in this township, that this is how this happens. If they don't, they have so many days to act, you had the third, they had that 30 days to act already.
Uh huh.
Now, we have to go through a legal process, but after that 30 days, the fines can be levied. Why haven't they been done yet?
This, we don't levy fines, we, we cite under an ordinance, the ordinance has a fine structure. The ordinance goes to the judicial branch, which is the magistrate. He then holds a hearing and levies fines. The fines are an up to, within the ordinance, he works within those parameters. We don't levy fines. All we can do is file citations. We filed the citation, and now we have to wait for that process to work out. Sorry, it's no different than if a, if a police officer pulls you over for speeding. The, you know, for speeding, it could be up to $500, let's say. The police officer doesn't get $500 from you, he files a citation, and then you go to the magistrate. It's the same thing, you know, it's a non-traffic citation.
And if you're from North Huntington, the magistrate usually lowers the fine. If you're outside North Huntington, he holds you to the maximum. So, I mean, that's what happens.
Well, I mean, I've contacted PETA and everything, these guys won't even call me back, I don't, I don't... It's a disgrace what happened over there. It is a tragedy with all these cats that died from this, and, and he's just living his life like there's, it's okay, and I am suffering the consequences of his actions. It is absolutely ridiculous. That's all I have.
If I can add something to that, I think if you go find out when the hearing is at the magistrate's, and you go to the hearing, and make, just stay there when the magistrate has a hearing, and make sure you get your testimony heard too, and tell them you want the full fine, and tell them what you're going through out there, just what you told us, tell the magistrate all that. If no one shows up at that hearing, he's going to, like they said, he'll set the fine at $25 or something. Go there and tell them just what you told us and what it, what a nuisance it is to you, and what a hardship it is on your life and what it's making it, and maybe, maybe he'll do something more to them.
We could bring him as our witness.
That'd be a suggestion, yeah.
You, you know, I'll have Josh contact you to come as a witness, whenever we get the notice of hearing.
All right, John.
All right, thank you. Any other residents would like to speak tonight that didn't have a chance to sign the book? All right, not seeing any responses since input, I believe we kind of gave a response during that. Anyone have anything else? Work session discussion topics, Manager Silka?
Okay, the first topic of discussion today is Shane Hornakack, and I hope I pronounced that right, or if not, you can correct me, but he's an Eagle Scout, he's doing an Eagle Scout project at Lyons Park, and he's going to brief the board on this project. Shane?
How bad did I butcher the name?
Hornakack, okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Shane, I like your mask. Thank you. First thing is, I would like to thank everybody for hav, having me here. Good evening, my name is Shane Hornakack, I am from Troop 251. I'm working to get my Eagle Scout rank. For my service project, I want to do something for my community that I live in. My project would be designing and installing a safety railing at Lyons Park. I wanted to explain my project to you and what the railing would look like. I made that drawing, I mean, that design, and I also made a drawing that is on the pamphlet for you guys, for you guys tonight. The concept of the railing was to give it a bridge appearance but to have a safety feature. I've worked with Mr. Miller and Mr. Turley on a practical design to give it a, give it a feature that's more than just a standard railing. The construction's based on being heavy-duty and little upkeep for years to come. It's made out of 4x4 pressure-treated lumber, covered by a powder-coated black aluminum sleeve. Stainless steel cable would be the railing. I will be talking to local companies in our community to help donate the materials. I also be asking, be asking members of the community to help install my railing. I hope to start as soon as I can get all the materials gathered. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you guys tonight, does anybody have any questions?
Shane, I'd just like to thank you for taking on this project, and I want to get your information before this, before you leave. I want to help out of getting some donations for you, because I've done a lot of grant projects with Lowe's and Home Depot and Mr. Schuster, one of our developers for RJBS. I'm thinking we could probably get all this stuff for you with no cost whatsoever to you. So, we'll share your information if you guys stick around, otherwise, we'll get in touch somehow.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Any other questions for Shane?
Shane, I'd just like to give you kudos, I like the design model, that's great, man, over here. I'm actually looking at it in a photo, and I'm thinking this is life to size, size to life, right? And then I'm realizing as I'm looking closer, I'm like, wait a second, you know, and that's pretty cool. And, and there it is, right there. I love your design, I like your concept drawing, I think it's really nice. Kudos to you for doing this, man.
Thank you very much.
And, you know, what you also bring is an extreme element of safety. I'm looking at the bridge, any idea what the drop-off is from the road into the creek?
To the bottom.
Yeah.
I can't remember exactly.
Is it enough for somebody to get seriously hurt?
Yes, there is, there's rocks, there's dragon. If someone falls, they can deal damage to the body.
Sure. So, thanks for having the concept to see this, and kudos, man, great job, great job.
Thanks, Shane.
Now, the lumber that you can see right there, that is the, like, that's the block that will be drilled into the concrete to hold up the railing. Thank you very much.
That sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
As I log on here for the next, for the budget presentation, just give me one second. The next part of the presentation is the discussion and, you know, presentation, discussion of the 2021 budget process. Kind of work you through the PowerPoint first, and we'll get to the details. Okay, we're there. All right, I'm very proud and pleased again to present the 2021 all-funds budget to you. This year, the all-funds budget is $16,374,159, and this is actually $776,378 less than the 2020...
Million.
Million, I'm sorry.
You're close.
I wish it was thousand. Million. $776,000 less than last year's.
Everybody, everybody understood you.
I was wondering why everybody's looking at me, it's like... This presentation will consist of a current financial trends impacting the township, a synopsis of the major funds and proposals, a review of the budget adoption timeline, and then a facilitated review of the budget. As always, this budget was developed using a bottom-up approach with the directors submitting their budget requests to the manager, then we've kind of developed a spending plan together to come up with what we can do and try to always keep it within our strategic plan. The small-funds budgets were developed utilizing historical debt and current expenditures. The small-fund budgets are meant to cover specific service areas, so the, the revenue and tax rate for those structures have to be, have to be in line with the, with the expenses so we don't have to supplement them with general fund. As always, we focus on three service levels throughout the budget process. The core services, which are those that we, as a municipality, are obligated to offer, you know, police, plowing, public works, financial services. The ancillary services, which enhance the quality of life, but go a little bit above the core services. We can say, you know, open-air parks for this, some of our recreational opportunities. The supportive services, which are traditionally non-traditional government opportunities, but we, but, that are offered, offered. I'd say that's like field rentals to outside leagues are probably a big one that I would say would be a supportive service because that's really not a core service, that's something offered as a definite supplement to the quality of life. But let me, I got a little bit happy with my clicker here. There we go, okay. This budget is presented to you with no new taxes or tax increases proposed for the general fund budget. fund budget. The current general fund budget for operations is 9.23 mils. Now, this rate was reduced in 2013 by one mil. And the current, a current mil at the end of 2020, we haven't got the 2021 value yet, brings in roughly about $395,000 per mil. If we received all of our taxes at 100%, we'd get 3.65 million dollars. As we know, all taxes aren't paid at face. So, on a normal year, a mil's gonna be about $379,550. We anticipate there's gonna be an increase in collections as new assessments are added every year, as new construction comes on at full-time and new construction comes on at interim tax. So, we do expect to see a little bit more every year. If you take a look at when the taxes were lowered in 2013, the cumulative rate of inflation as the U.S. Department of Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics points out is 13%. So, that a dollar in 2013 spends at 87 cents in 2020. So, the spending power of the mil over the time is reduced to roughly $330,000. If you take a look at the money that the township, you know, did not realize with the mil reduction, it's $2.7 million over the course of the seven years. Taking a look at our audited revenue to expenses from 2015 to 2019, one thing we can see is that our revenue has been pretty static, ranging from 12.40 million to 12.600, 12.6 million. However, in that same time, our expenses has increased annually from 12.1 million to roughly 13.9 million in 2019. So, as we see, our revenue has basically flattened out, however, our expenses have inclined. With that, you know, roughly in 2015, the township adopted a fund balance spend-down policy to supplement the general fund in roadwork and some special projects by spending down their fund balance. And from, in 2015, the fund balance was $5,691,000. In 2019, we ended it with an audited number of 3.862,000. So, as the expenses went up, revenue stayed same. Spending was supplemented through planned fund balance transfers. So, you see the downward trend. You're not gonna add to the fund balance because revenues don't match expenditures at, at ground zero. So, you have a deficit budget by design since 2015. Revenue concerns moving forward is that the level of service and capital purchases are not sustained under the current revenue paradigm. Our tax rate does not sustain our services. The fund balance, you know, has reached a statutory limit, which is a local statutory limit. It can be changed at any time. There's no law governing a statute that we need a fund balance. Our fund balance says 25% of the budget has to be maintained. So, that's where we are. And we have the MS4 hanging out there yet that we're, that we're supposed to be spending a million dollars a year on storm reduction projects that are outlining our storm, our MS4 plan. We were supposed to this year get an update of the first-class township code that's going to allow first-class township codes to submit and charge a fee for MS4 stormwater. And what that does is, instead of a tax, the fee applies to all properties, both taxable and non-taxable. So, it's an equal distribution for impervious surfaces. However, as this went to the state to be worked on at the legislative level, they wouldn't tell me who, but there was a powerful state legislator said, if that is in there, the first-class township code gets wiped away. We're not gonna do any revisions if that provision stays. So, that was taken out before it was even started to be discussed. Now, the sad part is that home rule-chartered municipalities, boroughs, and second-class townships all have the statutory authority to charge a stormwater fee. First-class townships were not. So, our only option, if we wanna do this, and it's something we're gonna have to be talking about this year, is to either create an authority to do it, which I don't think anybody wants to create another authority, because once you create them, you can never get rid of them, or have one of our other existing authorities charge the fee. That's something for a discussion. We're gonna have to raise revenue because we have to start meeting this mandate or we can face substantial daily fines of up to $25,000 a day. And they can actually surcharge you personally if you choose not to do it. So, we wanna make sure we're doing it, but it is truly an unfunded mandate. And this just, this kinda, you know, we've had the plan done, we've made all of our submissions. And the other parts of the MS4, we're doing well. We're tracking our outfalls, we're doing our education. It's just this mandated project to reduce pollutants, and these are ghost pollutants. These are, it's a formula to use to say, you have 10%, you have to get it down to 8%. So, it's, we have no ability to charge for it as of right now. But that is gonna be definitely a discussion we have to have this year because we can't go into 2021, 22 without an active plan to start doing these mandated upgrades. The general fund budget is $14,172,946. This budget is nearly $540,000 less than the initial approved 2020 budget. So, we've looked, we've cut, we've, we've taken out what we can. This includes a $1,144,000 use of fund balance to balance the budget at the end of the day, and there's no transfer to capital budget. The kicker is, well, over the last five years, we've been doing $100,000 to $150,000 a year in transfer to the capital budget to help with the capital purchases. And capital budget is funded by a one-mil capital tax. So, you know, our sustainability with our capital purchases is greatly hindered by not a lot, you know, because we're losing about $100,000, $150,000. The use of the fund balance to budget as proposed, that's why I said it's conditionally approved, is less than the fund balance, well, it's a million dollars less than the fund balance we needed for last year, or for this year. But it is not within the fund balance policy. You know, if this goes, it would be below the policy. Again, it's a local policy. It's not a state mandate. So, you know, we've taken $540,000 out of the budget. We do have an anticipated deficit of $1,144,000, which equals to 2.9 mils of taxation. The budget is balanced conditionally with, you know, the transfer of the fund balance that which put us down below the 25%. Now, knowing that whenever we balance the budget with that big number at the end, it was $2 million last year, you know, $1 million for next year, we never, we've never met that threshold, simply because the budget, especially on the overtime, the salaries, and then everything that salaries generate, is budgeted 100% worst-case scenario. We almost, we almost never reach that worst-case scenario. And there's also economies that are coming, gas prices go down, you know, vehicles we're able to maintain. So, the budget is presented, as you know, as a plan. It's not a, it's not gospel. It's something that we guess estimate and we try to live by. But at the end of the day, we try to budget conservatively. Now, this is pretty bare-bones conservative, but we know in no given time are we gonna have to spend that $1 million in addition to what we've got in. We've been averaging between $300,000 and $400,000. Now, in 2019, we had $800,000, but we had the $650,000 Haywood slide, which was unanticipated and we paid for it at a general fund. That was a huge slide that we had to pay for. So, that's why in 2019, we used $800,000 worth of the budget. And that was an approved expenditure over and above the fund balance. This deficit while we're here is not unexpected. It's been forecasted, it's been, you know, forewarned, going back to the, in, to the 2016 budget message of the previous manager in our audits from 2017. We knew we'd reach the juncture, however, we've reached it now where we're kind of at critical mass going into 2021. I can guarantee that after 2021, if we don't make certain, some type of change, we're not gonna have sufficient fund balance to cover our operating expenses for the first quarter of 2022. And that's gonna require us either to take a line of credit or a tan loan to get through until taxes come through.
Jeff Brad?
Yes.
Are you talking with that money? Is that core services, ancillary, supportive?
Well... It combines with the budget. I mean, that balances the overall budget. So, that, that $1 million kinda covers a little bit of everything.
Now, what purpose was that Haywood slide?
Yeah, I mean, you know, that cost, that gave us, took a year away from us, let's say. You know, so maybe we'd have to address it in 2022 instead of 2021 or 2023. But yeah, the Haywood slide was a big chunk of money.
But say in the year 2022, say in the year 2023, 2024, we don't have any of these substantial slides, and the year balances itself on, that doesn't happen?
It doesn't, because it doesn't right now. We don't have anything big in there right now. Because we know we're always gonna have $200,000 worth of, of work because it rains, it gets wet, and we have, and they come up. So, this is, the budget presented now is a very bare-bones budget. It gets us, it funds us everything at our current service levels but doesn't have any big projects in it. In fact, it even has less roadwork in it. And we, because we're also not, you know, augmenting the liquid fuels budget to do roadwork where we usually put in a couple hundred, up to $500,000, $600,000 a year to, to get extra roadwork.
Some of this loss of money and revenue is due to COVID-19, yes, of course.
No, no, no. I mean, we haven't lost, we've lost maybe $20,000 in COVID because we don't have anything that's really COVID-effective. Our taxes are trending within normal ranges. The only thing we're gonna lose is a little bit of probably the grocery receipts tax because some businesses have been closed. But that's, that's only $8,000 a business. So, you know, whenever you get to the revenue, if you look at the revenue, I didn't forecast that much of a loss because we're not impacted with user fees, parking authorities, things that people have to go out and spend. Here, you basically pay your real estate tax and your wage tax. Our demographics keep us working. I mean, we're actually trending higher this year in our earned income tax than last, than last year. So, there, there's no concessions in this budget to say COVID. With that, you know, we take a look at how do we balance the budget to get through to the end of the year and then you get through next year. One is suspend the fund balance policy with the, and balance the budget in this year to, to get it passed, and then follow up with a comprehensive review of everything in the first quarter or early second quarter of next year. Simply because now that we've had four people come on, the new people have now had a year under their belt. So, they actually, you know, kinda are familiar with our operation. Come in and take, because we can start amending our budget April 1st. Take a look at what departments are, have, kinda go through with a, with a fine-tooth comb, figure out what service level we want from public works, from parks, from planning and zoning, from administration, and then, you know, recraft the budget, recraft our plans as we go into the 2022 budget process, we have a much better plan of spending. There, there's no silver bullet that if you do this, everything goes, you know, everything goes away. You know, the current real estate tax can be adjusted, 2.9, you know, take, take it up by three mils. We balance the budget without any use of surplus funds and the surplus, you know, stays and maybe grows a little bit. I mean, there's, you know, this isn't new to anybody, but we operate a private dispatch center. We're one of two in the county. By, you know, we've done a cost-benefit analysis there. If that would be turned over to the county, there'd be a cost savings of $413,000 a year with the, by keeping two secretaries and then having the dispatch go to the county. And as, you know, as chief worked, he's, he's actually out of town right now. But this isn't something that, you know, we'd like to see. I mean, everybody's happy with, with the dispatch, but it is, it's a bullet out there that can be replaced at, at no cost. I mean, you know, we have $30,000 extra in crack ceiling for the three-year-old roads. It's a very good program, but it could go away. That's, that's $30,000. We're also looking, Director Miller and myself, we're looking at ticketing our events for, you know, and taking a look at our costs that we charge for field rentals, programs. Again, not the silver bullet, but it's a little bit more. And also taking a look at resident versus non-resident fees. So, there's, there's, there's a couple areas right there. With, and what that does is that doesn't cut our primary service. And, you know, any other, when we go in, you know, you're probably, if you cut in anywhere else within the departments, you're gonna see a deficit of service somewhere. Now, what we've, what we've done is we've, when we took the budget, there's a freeze in 2021 of wages for administration and non-union personnel. The police contract did negotiate a 0% raise, and then the absentee raises are 85 cents an hour, and that contract comes up at the end of next year. That comes, so '21 is the final year of that contract. You know, we do have, you know, minimal funds for the second-floor expansion. Right now, the police department is criminally out of space. They're over everybody. The administration department, we have people literally working in closets. We can't bring another person in because we have no place to put them. So, with the, the loss of NHTMA, you know, we do have a plan that we're gonna bring back to expand, move planning to the second floor, bring the police to allow them to use the planning offices as a detective space, and to move the administrative offices outside of the bullpen that we basically work in. So, it gives us a little bit of privacy that we don't have to take some of our calls outside in the parking lot, and it allows, you know, some workflow, also to bring EMA from the garage up to the upstairs. And then we have very little, it's just a lot of like housekeeping items to make our move there, rather than moving some wires, you know, some carpeting and some paint. The road program, we took the road program down to basically what our liquid fuels is bringing us. And then we're gonna do about $80,000 worth of the fiber metal on the rural roads and $30,000 in crack sealing. We have $300,000 in for stormwater facility maintenance and landslide repair, which we have two major projects we're gonna work on, the Liberty Avenue landslide and the Forest Drive, which we had a major failure in that area. Good news, our health insurance premiums actually went down a half a percent, which, you know, nationally went up 6%. So, because of our, you know, our healthcare usage, you know, we've actually went down. And we've, we've been either zero or we're down the last few years. So, we have a very good healthcare plan. I actually bid it out quietly, and the best I could do is $200,000 more for the same coverage from another company. So, we were there. Also, at the same time, our pension contribution went up about $300,000. So, we're gonna see that go up to about almost $700,000 a year. Now, with the budget adoption schedule is, you know, you got the budget this, you know, first week in November, talk, today will be our first session. You know, if we can get it wrapped up between now and the next meeting, it could be advertised, you know, voted for inspection at next week's meeting. And finally adopted at the December 16th meeting. Our budgets have to be advertised 20 days prior to being voted on. So, in order to vote on it by December 16th, it has to be advertised by November 27th. And that's basically the overview of the budget. What we can do now is kinda go in through the department budgets, you know, into each of the departments and just see where that, see where we go from there. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. And the directors that are here will be glad to answer any questions. Let me get budget spread up here. Okay, we're gonna start, first start general fund revenue. I think as we go through that, you know, the real estate taxes, we're actually looking to get $150,000 more this year, you know, coming up into the, into the year. And that, that's basically taking our trend, you know, up. And also, we've gotten, you know, a little bit better in forecasting our prior year's real estate tax.
Now, did we not give people the option to wait till the 31st of December with that penalty?
Yes.
What's our outstanding balance on helping you know that people owe us still? Do you know that number?
I don't have that number.
Where are we thinking, Mike?
Well, we're probably gonna come in about three, you know, we're trending right now almost collecting actually where we are today. So, we're probably gonna have our 5% deficit because people just don't pay their taxes. Because when you get your packet tomorrow, you'll see that our, our, our real estate has been trending actually where it's supposed to be. We're losing a little bit in interest this year because we're not getting late payments. But next year will be the same year, you know, now we'll be back to a regular collection.
Plus, we have a repeat of that revision, and the state steps in, the county steps in, because everybody will be free until the end of the year. So, it's a good piece of notice. You know, this COVID's really, really slow curveball. And makes diagnosing and prognosis...
In talking with our tax collector, the good part about our tax collections is most of them are through mortgage companies. So, you know, they get them, we get them in bulk, and it's not waiting for everybody just to write that single check. That is people pay their mortgage. And again, our demographic helps us here because a lot of our people aren't affected at the workplace. Look, enabling taxes. You know, we've seen, you know, some, you know, you know, we're looking to have our wage taxes, you know, we're trending into the 400 4.9 million dollars. That's probably where our biggest thing we're looking at. And also, we're looking to have our transfer tax come back. We lost our transfer tax, real estate transfer tax, as real estate basically shut down for the quarter. And we we plan to have a regular year next year. And everything else is basically taking a look. We've we're looking at $45,000 less in business grocery receipts as a as a guesstimate. We're seeing a lot more coming as delinquent because we didn't waive the delinquent fee. We didn't move that to the end of the year. So people who who weren't having their taxes done until July and August are paying a delinquent fee. But also, we've also had some great collections for some reason. We're trending way over that and we're not planning to have a banner year next year. License and permits, transient retail license, and the big one is the cable franchise tax. We did our audit last year. We got a couple more plans put on that they didn't have on. So we're planning that's going to be static about 675,000 for next year. Highway occupancy permits, we're doing a much better job of tracking those and getting those collected. Funds and forfeitures, no change, interest, that's for the money we keep in the general fund. The interest rate is down this year. And so we did lose, you know, a little bit across the board. But that's basically, you know, the life of interest because it went down to zero. So I don't foresee the Fed doing anything with interest for the next two years. Municipal building offices, that's our rents. You know, it was cut down this year. We cut it down again since we're not going to get to $20,000 from NHTMA. And very quite frankly, the 21,000 they pay probably barely covers their utilities because we pay for all the utilities. So it's, you know, we're not we're not going to see that out of the, you know, out of any operations because we we still have to heat, air conditioning, and light to the area. State grants, we're planning to see, you know, a 40,000 40,000 come in probably from from COVID related expenses from the state. Our police operating grants will be about 15,000. Shared revenue pretty much stays the same, other than we're not going to see any alcoholic beverage license revenue as you as you're where the PLCB waived all license fees for next year. So we will lose $10,000 there. Safe pension assistance, we'll see a little bit more because our MMO went up. Drilling impact fees, we're hoping, you know, to see 65,000 again this year, you know, get that back. Foreign fire, that is a surcharge put on outside of property taxes, outside the state property insurances, and that that's given to us. That is a direct pass through to the volunteer fire company. And we are seeing more recycling grant. So we are tracking our recycling better. So we did see an upsurge on that. That wasn't received yet in August when when these numbers were run, but 38,000 will handle that one. State government, everything pretty much stays the same, other than our engineering fee reimbursements and paving reimbursements. We're doing a for many years, we found out that people we were having escrow funds for engineering services, sending bills, but never bringing it in. You know, it was kind of just sitting there in a fund. So we've starting last year, we kind of put it together, we brought it in, and we're doing a lot better job of when we bill for engineering, we bring it in as a as an income to show because it kind of offsets both, you know, Bob Robinson and Paul's work. And at the same time, the paving reimbursement, whenever we we work with utility companies and they either, you know, and they do work, instead of having them do it, then we come in and do it if it's on our schedule, come in the next year or two, they pay us a fee. So what we're doing with that now is escrowing that fee and then bringing it in as revenue on the year that we actually do the work there. So we're not kind of bringing it as revenue, spending it and cheating Peter to pay Paul, you know, two years later. So you'll see that line item will actually show true money coming in. Everything else down in that line item is pretty much a status quo. Police services, probably the big one there is, you know, we're hoping to have building permits come back. You know, we lost over a quarter of building permits, so that that should come back. And we should be able to make up for the difference last year. Recreation programs, we kind of bumped both of those up a little bit because, you know, we're going to be working on a new fee ordinance to, you know, kind of make our fees a little bit more market rates and also take a look at resident versus non resident rental fees as, you know, what if North Huntington is paying the freight, should we be getting a little bit more from people outside the area to use using our services and attending our events? Miscellaneous revenue, that's, you know, insurance reimbursements, that's that's, you know, anything else that we don't know what it is. So that's kind of a guesstimate. We put that in at 120, which kind of been tracking on average the last couple of years. There is no interfund transfers as we're not going to be funding the capital accounts. Refunds from prior year's expenses, those are the the dividends we get back from our healthcare, workers' compensation, and property liability. You know, we're kind of working that out. And that that should be a pretty good number as we had our agent kind of query for us what what we can expect in dividends. And that is, as the memo says, it offsets almost 45% of the premium we pay, we get back in dividends. And the net income of revenue to balance the budget is 1.1 million, $144,000. And that brings the budget to 14,172,946 dollars in revenue. And I can tell you, there's no fluff in those lines. I mean, yes. Oh. Okay. I apologize. I got I got hung up in the caught up in. So any questions on revenue? Okay. Expenses, as we kind of look at the expenses, you know, one thing we did take a look at is memberships, association fees, training. We really took a hard look at, you know, what are we getting? What are we spending? The governing body salaries are set by by state code. Dues and training dues, training and travel, the biggest chunk there is the PML membership. And then there's Westmoreland County Chamber and some training funds in there for for the board. Constituent services, that is a line item that was requested by Commissioner Blasco to give $500 to each commissioner for educational or constituent events within their ward. That is a $3,500 line item.
Question about that? What did you have in mind, Brian? I I saw that and I read it and I I just said, well, we've never had this line item before for constituent services. And I just was wondering, like, what is this?
So so looking to potentially give about $500 per commissioner at use at their discretion to hold, you know, community events. I know that we have the board meetings open to the community here. We don't get a lot of interest. So if you want to do something here, you know, at one of our township parks, here in the townhouse, inviting, you know, whatever the state state elected officials, federal elected officials, it's just an opportunity to network with your constituents, to communicate, see what their needs are. Because again, I know I try to do social media to connect with people, and that touches some platform but doesn't hit everybody else. But it just funds that would be there to help do any sort of programming. If you were in college and remember, like, your RA kind of floor programming, whether you did things through enrichment, you know, like the police department does the coffee with cops sort of things, it's just another way to network with your residents to see what their needs are, what their ideas are, and just, you know, be truly connected with your constituents. So.
But so many of these things we're doing already, and we don't, we don't have a line item cost for it. So I would like to see that taken out.
I agree with that.
You know, I don't personally think that's necessary. I'm sure that Mr. Miller, Director Miller, wouldn't mind if we set up a booth at one of the community events and, you know, if any commissioners are available and they can be there. Any other events that he hosts, I think we could be there. And even if we want to set something up, I mean, I think this room is usually always available to set something up. So I I personally don't see it necessary. And even if it was passed, I would not touch that money that was able there for me to do. I wouldn't touch it. I know it's a rather small amount, but I think you could take that out, in my opinion.
It's a small amount, but we had all of our administrators going through their budgets and making bare bone decisions. And I think that this is something that's not necessary.
The other board discussion. Might be mistaken, but I think there was somewhat of consensus on there. You could probably take that line item out.
Okay, going going to the next general administration line item, that's that's $15,000 less than last year. All the administrative salaries have been, as I said, you know, frozen for 2021. Clerical salaries are within the union wages. What we've done, you'll see in all the areas, that the workers' compensation is going to be a big item. For some reason, this has always been budgeted a little bit and then a big lump at the end, then tried to work through. What I've done was taken the workers' comp against the audit and try to assign a true cost to each department, what the workers' comp is going to be. So that 13,900 line item, you see it's $12,000 more than last year because we've always budgeted historically for somebody 1,050. But the true cost of workers' comp from our audits is 13,000 for that department. So you'll see that in every department, the workers' comp is going to be up. Kind of notables, you know, you know, the cuts, you know, postage, a little bit off the average solicitor's fees, we kind of just looked at averages. Economic development, we took took that down. Arbitration hearing went up $20,000. We know we're going to have an arbitration hearing in July or in January. So those costs are going to be budgeted there. Computer programming, I took 35,000, that was reduced by 35,000. We've kind of had it within our $100,000 have been working. We've upgraded our computers in the last year. So we're good for computers for another three years. And now we've actually lowered our contract with the new vendors. So that should be a pretty good line item. Dues and subscriptions, kind of taking those down. Took staff training down 5,000, you know, to $2,500. I don't think there's going to be many conferences. There are going to actually be live conferences this year, but we're also going to really try to limit it to maybe one conference per person because we're just trying to cut back on spending that we can do. And capital expenditures, we took that down 5,000. And just so you know, the two budget of 2020 numbers are the ones that we adopted in for January 1. They're not the revised numbers. So you get a truer look at the budget of this year towards last year. The tax collection office, that was reduced by $5,000, $5,500 more from the tax collector supply and expenses. We bought a new computer this year, a printer. We so we we think we will be able to spend less. Everything else is commissioned, other than the $10,000 statutory salary. So if we blow that line out, it means we're getting more taxes in. So we're happy with that. Building and plants. There's a $6,000 reduction in that in that line item. The custodians wages are in there. Tools, equipment, you know, everything else we budgeted pretty much, you know, as we all as we want to go. There's 15,000 in capital improvements. And that's to kind of do the little work upstairs that we need to do. Police department. As we go for the police department, they're $11,000 less than prior year. We really worked, you know, I will say that, you know, Chief and I worked hard to kind of figure out what his number should be. You know, it's 27 officers. They're at a 0% raise, percentage raise over the course. But they were able to knock down just about all of their all their line items. One big one is their training is they have some supervisor trainings to do. We want to get a couple of train the trainers in. So there's some opportunities to get the train, get police training. So that's that's a high line item, but that is one that we have to, you know, take a look at and make sure we keep training those folks.
Jeff?
Yes.
What is the difference between the two workers' comps in the police line?
Dispatchers and police officers. Fire department, any other questions on police? Yes.
Just so I guess residents know, that police department overall budget, that 5.3 is basically around what 36, 37% of the proposed budget?
Yes. There's a chart on the back that I can tell you exactly what it is.
I think it was 36, if I'm not mistaken. All right.
And that also includes dispatcher. So excuse it a little bit. It's not just police.
Well, police and dispatch for emergency services.
Yeah, so 36, 36%.
All right. And typically, what should local municipalities spend on their police department, average wise?
In about the 30% range.
All right. So we're a little bit trending higher than average.
Yes.
Okay.
Fire department. We took that down $36,000. What we got there is their workers' comp mod is coming back down. They had a couple of bad years. They've had some good years. So we're seeing the effects of the good years. Then, you know, the relief association, that's that's the direct pass through. Rescue eight, they're just about what they were last year, from utilities to gasoline to workers' comp and the $72,000 contribution. Planning and zoning, they're roughly $90,000 less than budgeted last year. The majority of that could be that there was a position for the public work or the planning and zoning technician that we did not ask for funding this year. That is to replace Ryan's position that was never replaced whenever he went to the director's position. As we kind of go through there, you know, we taking a look at most of their expenses are personnel and then minor minor expenses. Training, they're training reduced by $30,000. That that department has very little fluff to get into. So that that is one thing. It's hard to cut in planning and zoning. School emergency management, we took that down $9,500, kind of just cut the equipment budget and the training budget down to $1,500. As I said, we're not going to be seeing a lot of in person trainings. And a lot of the trainings from FEMA and Pima are web based and most of them are free. School crossing guards, that's basically the same as last year. We're saving money because we're not using full time crossing guards. Public Works Department, Public Works Department is showing a $386,000 line, you know, reduction. The majority of that is we've cut our salt budget down this year. Over the last two years, we've had our minimum salt buys and we have enough salt to start our own ocean if we had a large enough body of water. So we cut our minimum order down. And we feel that barring, you know, a winner of legendary status, we should be okay with salt. And also, we just took some of our other line items and took a look at our historical spending and cut them down where we can. Not a lot of surprises. In there, we do have $300,000 for the capital projects for the two landslide repairs. Actually, the drainage issues, we had road reconstruction was cut down and as we're not going to be doing the big supplement to the liquid fuels. That's, you know, the public works budget, it's pretty much the same as it was last year minus the the big salt line item. Parks and recreation, there's a 99,000 reduction there. The big item, you know, was is 25,000 less in professional services. In the last few years, they've engaged consultants to do some of the master planning and parks planning. We don't have any plans to use those consultants this year. So we took that majority of that out. Everything else is pretty much gone. Our repairs and land and building, we're taking down a little bit playground equipment. As Director Miller put in, he's going to be putting in surfaces into the smaller playgrounds for $85,000. And the rental of equipment. So that's pretty much going where it is. The parks and rec projects have basically been funded, you know, to have the same level. Hopefully, we can get people Hopefully, we can get people together soon. In the community development, we have Westmoreland County Transit, it's six thousand twenty-seven for the bus stops. That's been an annual fee, that hasn't been raised, and forty thousand dollars of community demolition. Just, you know, as I did research for a question for Commissioner Stump. Since 2010, of all the demolitions we've done, we actually got Arlene back on one of them. Two of them went to judicial sale, and we lost almost sixty thousand dollars. And the other ten or twelve have never been sold. So as we demo these properties, they don't recycle, they don't redevelop, they kind of just sit there. But it was kind of shocking whenever I had planning run those numbers, like, wow. I didn't, you know, but, you know, one sold and we got Arlene back. Insurances, we took a hard look at our insurances with our insurance broker. As you look, you know, we get almost three hundred thousand dollars back from our insurance dividends, so it's really hard to bid out because we, once we bid out, we lose the dividends. And I don't think anybody can compete on a face value. If we get in another trust, it'd take years to build up a dividend again, so we're kind of happy where we are. Law enforcement liability insurance, Cross the Nation, that's going up between ten and fifteen percent with all the unrest that we've had this year. So that's nothing that we've done wrong, it's just the market right now is a hard market and they're raising up. Insurance deductibles, fifty thousand, that's one deductible under our employment practices, as our deductible rose to fifty thousand dollars last year. Employee benefits, that's some of the, that's retirement health insurance, pension. In our sixty-five special, we've had a couple of people go from our regular benefits to the sixty-five special this year. That's why you see the increase of twenty thousand dollars from this year to next year, because we've had people graduate into the sixty-five plus club. Tax refunds, that's both the Act one seventy-two and any tax refunds that come through reassessment. That's tracking pretty much where it is, and that budget comes out at fourteen million one hundred seventy-two thousand nine four six, which balances with the revenue as proposed. Any questions? Okay. Quickly kind of go through the, the next biggest one is the capital budget, which we were projecting three-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars in tax revenue. And we have roughly twenty-one thousand left over from this year as we close off our capital projects to carry over. On the expenses, we're looking to spend the three-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand on a few projects for administration. We're looking at thirty-five thousand dollars for a video system, video camera system. We have a lot of nooks and crannies here and a lot of public exits, and we don't know who's there. So from, even from the police department throughout, we need to upgrade our video cameras, it's a recommendation. And also thirty thousand dollars for furnishings, as we move some of the offices around. For the police department, they're looking very hard, and it's a recommendation for the chief to go to upgrade our new car and body cameras. Because, as we're looking at our limited funds of three-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars carrying forward. We're proposing to do these at a five-year lease purchase, to kind of stretch our money out on this. And that's thirty-two thousand dollars a year for five years, but that gives body cameras for every officer and new video cameras for every officer. Which I think is one of, is something I think we all should have deployed, because that really protects the officer, especially in this day and age.
So every officer and every car will have cameras?
Yeah, right now, all of our cars have cameras, but they're on their final leg. So every car, and we'll get a new camera, and every officer will have a body camera, and this will also give us audio. And in the police department, there's two cars budgeted, normally there's three cars budgeted. But to maintain our fleet continuity, we feel, you know, two can handle it. This year, we only have one coming off, and that car is going to be transferred to administration.
How many miles is that one coming off of?
It's an old LTD, it's probably close to over a hundred.
Okay.
It's.
That has life expectancy.
Yeah, I mean, it's not safe for a police vehicle, for administration vehicle to use every now and then. It's perfect for a couple, for a year or two. For the public works department, our street sweeper is in its life stage, where now we're talking tens of thousands whenever we need to repair it. So we're proposing to do a street sweeper on a five-year lease purchase at ninety-one thousand, which, it'd be sixty thousand dollars because there's a thirty thousand dollar down payment and trade-in. I've done these before in the past, they're leased, to do them in a lease with a dollar purchase at the end. That way, you don't have to do a debt filing with the state, and you bid it out to the banks, and they cut, you know, the manufacturer gives you a rate, but you also bid it out, and the banks give you a rate. The bank can usually beat their rate. And that, again, stretches out the financial impact. And our street sweeper, which is used a lot, doesn't have much life without starting to put tens of thousands of dollars in a year. A tire balance machine, as we're doing a lot of our police maintenance, our small, our balance machine is out of, it really needs to be repaired and replaced. So that's a five thousand dollar line item. And then a half-ton pickup truck. We only have work trucks in, that actually are used for work. So that's a hundred thirty-four thousand for police capital, or for public works capital. Emergency management, we have none. And then the parks capital is at seventy-one thousand. There's attachments for our vent track tractor that we got two years ago, that we're going to keep building that arsenal up. There's a quad cab pickup truck and movie equipment that got us through this year, I think with bubble gum and gum bands. So there's that for that, and then that comes at three-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand. And as you know, the capital fund is a dedicated one mil of income, we can't transfer this money anywhere else, we have to spend it on capital. So that's there. State motor fund, we're, this year, about five years ago, the governor decided to give extra money to the state motor vehicle fund. It was kind of just, you know, we got extra this year, they've taken it away for 2021. So we went down from a million dollars coming in last year to nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand coming in this year. And we have roughly thirteen hundred dollars of interest from that account, and we have no carryover, we should have no carryover from this year. And that will go right to the approved highway, the paving program. That's a segregated account, that goes through three audits a year. We can't use it for anything but what is allowed by the law. So that's there. Fire service budget, that's a million, I think a million and a quarter. We have four-hundred-and-ninety thousand coming in on taxes, interest of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And then we have a prior year's balance of thirty-six thousand nine hundred. What happens is we write this check in at the end of June, and anything that comes in from taxes after that just gets rolled into next year's distribution. And those five-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand will be divided by our fire companies equally. Fee and lieu. We're looking, we're projecting twenty-one thousand, one hundred dollars in revenue, twenty-one thousand in revenue, one hundred dollars in interest. And for the projects there, we're looking for lines, to put fitness equipment at Lions Park, sort of like we have around Indian Lake. And then to upgrade the lighting for Indian Lake, around the trail for twenty-one thousand. And then we're using a little bit of excess of that, six thousand four hundred dollars of excess funds from that account to go twenty-seven thousand five hundred. And the fee and lieu is money, as you know, is getting from developments instead of putting in parks. And then it's specified into the three parks, you know, what park it goes into, and it has to be spent on park upgrades. Water fund budget, these are for hydrants. We raised the rates last year, so that'll be, we have fifty-five thousand seventy dollars coming in. And fifty-five thousand seventy dollars going out, between tax collectors' commissions, service fees, and any new hydrant orders. And the special projects is when we put the hydrant markers in, anytime we repave a road, we have to replace the hydrant markers, that comes out of that fund. Light fund balance, we raised the rates on the light fund last year, and that is simply for the streetlights. There's a formula, if you live within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of the streetlight, you're assessed a fee. So those are basically in and out accounts. You know, the appendices are listed for your information, I went over some of them in my presentation. Glad to hear any questions, comments, chastisements.
Any possibility of freezing overtime and maybe doing a, like, say a one percent reduction in administrative costs across the board?
With freezing overtime, I think you have to look at, contractually, we have obligations. If you freeze overtime, and let's say public works overtime, if it snows, do we not, I mean, we have to do the job. Police overtime has to be done. It's tough to freeze overtime, but we don't do a lot of overtime. I mean, if you take a look at our overtime, basically, it's when it occurs. I mean, when we have snow, we have to do it. We don't have guys hanging around, if there's a streetlight call out, there's contractual obligation, we have to send two people out at X amount of overtime. So we try to manage our overtime, and I think between Rich and our chief, they really manage our overtime well. However, to say to freeze it, operationally, I think it'd be, definitely it could put us in violation of contracts. And with the one percent reduction. We've really pounded those line items down to where, if we take away, we're just, we can't stop buying paper. I think what we do is, we really start buying bulk. We're buying things that we need, we're down, really now down to counting pens before we buy them. So to say a one percent reduction, we've taken four percent last year, we've taken it again this year. We're kind of really tight with those operational expenses, that we have to have it to go. We have to have postage, we have to have, you know, we've cut out paper products, which, you know, we buy our own, you know, paper cups, we don't buy anymore. You know, all the township, we, you know, paper plates, everything else. We've really taken a look at what we don't need to buy for operations.
Is there anything in the parks that we could hold off for a year by?
Out of the general fund, I mean, you have to take a look at, you know, if you hold off doing a, let's say, doing a playground, it's just going to be next year. I mean, I think the parks plan that we had is safety material, we're not buying play structures, we're putting the safety material down, which I think is probably a beneficial cost. Because we're not replacing mulch on a normal basis, we're not, you know, we put it down, and basically the maintenance is vacuuming it. You're blowing it off with weed eaters or, you know, leaf blowers.
Got a few questions. So looking over, you know, the past few years review, what was the main driver on, you know, between that 2017 and 2018 and 19, that really re-jumped by a figure of a million or so?
You really increased your road program. And that's where, and then you had some landslide repairs.
Okay, so that's with the road paving program and the landslide repair. All right, and then obviously, the road paving program scaled back this year, but hopefully, with the new design of road paving program, we're hopefully able to pretty much pave about the same amount of streets at a better price.
Yeah, yes, I mean, you're going to see more bang for your buck. I can't say it's going to be equal to a two million dollar project, but you'll get a lot more pavement done.
All right, and then with us, and the proposed budget, taking the money out of basically our savings to balance a budget. You would say that would take us down below the twenty-five percent fund balance policy. What would be the remainder in that fund?
I mean, it'd be a guessed amount, a guess, we'd probably be about two million, I mean, between one point five and two million, until I see what we end up right now.
So we'll just say, be on the safe side, one point five. And then if the proposed budget's basically fourteen point five million, I think you said. So we'd be way below that twenty-five percent, we would need to change that policy. I was one of the ones that proposed that policy when it came out, and I'm a little uncomfortable doing that because, just like we had years previous, an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar landslide incident. We don't have a savings nest egg, we'll be going to borrow money to do those projects, so I'm a little concerned about that. And then you talked about, I guess, some brainstorming ideas at the end there about different areas we could save money. I know I'm probably the driver behind the dispatch talk, I've been at that for many years now. And I don't know when I proposed that, but probably maybe the first or second year I was elected. And I think somewhere in here, you said that we're, you know, shortcoming about two point seven, two point eight million because we lowered the taxes. Just doing rough numbers, you know, we would have that two point seven or two point eight million dollars if we got rid of dispatch back then, because we would have been saving three to four hundred thousand dollars. And we would probably be having a conversation, trying to make difficult decisions. I, like I said, I've been one of the ones that have been bringing that up every year, it's kind of my public announcement every year when we talk about the budget. But I think we unfortunately need to really consider looking at that, or the boards need to go and consider, like Jeff explained, to increase taxes. And I really do not want to see us increase taxes, even though we haven't done so in quite some time. But our neighbors across the way, the school board likes to raise our taxes every year to the state minimum without having it on the ballot. So I would like to see us have, be some good stewards of the residents' tax base and not do that. So unfortunately, I think we're going to need to make some difficult decisions. Like I said, for one, we're going to need to adjust the fund balance policy. And if we do so, and if there's only worst-case scenario, a million or so in there, we're just putting off these difficult decisions till next year. So, I mean, and out of Jeff's, I guess, recommendations here, not any of those other items are really much of an impact as far as the monetary value goes. I mean, taking thirty thousand dollars for crack ceiling, I mean, yeah, it might be saving thirty thousand dollars, but I think that's money probably well spent on getting longevity out of the roads. Charging people for events, I mean, I think the community appreciates events, the park and recreations do, and I think it's a benefit for the community to have them free. I think you start charging for events, you might get a little bit of revenue, but then participation to those events might go down because you're, you know, charging people to go to them. And I think those are good public events that we could go to, like you were saying, Brian, about having outreach as far as the commissioner's going to. I know I try to go to as many as I can, and every event, there's always a good amount of people in the public there having a good time. So I would not like this to see, start charging for any type of recreation or public events of that nature. I don't know. Guess that's all I have. I guess I'm going to have to start making some difficult decisions on where we have to make some type of sacrifices or increase taxes.
You know, as I always address, my concerns are with the expenses of the vehicles, and I understand that we need to have a safe fleet for our staff and police departments. But I'm driving a car with a hundred and thirty-eight thousand miles on it, and I keep saying, one more year, one more year. And I look at some of our fleet, and they look pretty nice. And I'm not saying you can see the undercarriage of those and the body, everything else, but that's my advice again, is, that's my advice to Jeff back in, I guess, the spring of saying, I don't want to see any more vehicles being purchased.
How many vehicles we have in the proposed, I think, what, three Jeff, or four?
We have, we have two police vehicles, one parks truck, and one public works truck. And those, and the two trucks that we're replacing are trucks that are costing us now in maintenance.
Okay.
I mean, our administrative vehicles are, the hand-me-downs are the hundred thousand clunkies.
Jeff, is there any way that we can use utility carts instead of the, or the trucks to do the same kind of work? You know, a utility cart costs two thousand dollars, a truck costs forty-five, fifty thousand dollars. Can we use any other vehicles to use those for public works or parks or anything along those lines?
We do have gators within the parks, but there's still, it comes a time where you have to put materials, tools, and move people that you can't use the gator. I mean, the gators are used very efficiently, in fact, we bought a couple in the last two years, but you still need trucks, because you still need to. you still need to get to Lowe's, you still need to get to Norman Supply. That's, you know, even the last truck, the Park Scott, came off a public works fleet. It was a little bit banged up for public works, but it still worked for parks, because it didn't have to drive as much. So we do economize, and with the police cars, that's someplace I don't think you can economize, because you're asking people to pursue, be there, that's their offices. I mean, with our administration vehicles, we take it to the last minute. Our public works vehicles, we take them to the last minute. You know, this year, we're not buying a large truck, and we hope that doesn't catch us up in the end, because whenever it snows, you need to have your plows ready to go. I mean, or you're down and you're increasing your maintenance costs. And I am also a person who, when I trade a car in, it generally comes in a Ziploc bag. So I understand your, you know, but, you know, for a police department, I think you can't skimp there, because if you skip on tires or skip on vehicles, you could actually endanger our people.
And we are, we were, I guess, proposed to get three, and we're actually down to two, so.
And I can say from experience, those cars are probably run 24 hours a day, the police cars, they don't stop. And you don't, that's the last thing, you don't want even 90 or 100,000 mile an hour, 90, if they have 90,000 or 100,000 miles on them, I mean, that is asking those guys a lot, that if they get in a high-speed chase, you know. I mean, that is tough, because they're run constantly 24/7.
Jeff, going back to what you were saying about the pickup truck versus the gator, I want to have kind of a face-off with those two types of vehicles. You're saying that we need to pick up trucks, because we need to haul personnel, we need to haul bigger pieces of equipment. So then why are we wasting our money with gators?
Well, because in gators, because gators, to get around the parks, to get people around, to get parked, yeah, maybe you want to help us out here, I mean, you need a little bit of both.
So Dan, let me ask you this, right off the bat, how many gators do you have in your inventory right now?
Four.
Do you need them?
Yes.
100%?
Yes, we have two at Ocala and two at Indian Lake.
Okay, what are you using them for?
I'll tell you what they're routinely used for, is we go from pavilion to pavilion on weekends after the rentals, we're hauling garbage in them, we're hauling dirt in them, we're hauling ball field equipment in them, things that we typically cannot put in a pickup truck and take a pickup truck onto a turf area by the pavilion or a turf area by the ball field.
Okay. What does a gator cost, new?
$12,000.
And you've got four of them, so you're looking at $48,000.
Yes, but we've had them now for several years.
Okay, right. What's the turnover rate on a gator? How often, how long do you maintain a gator? How long would you have on average?
We haven't turned one over since we bought them. I think the first one we bought over was probably about six years ago.
Okay, so you're getting a pretty good return on investment then?
We are, they're very, they're very efficient.
Okay, okay. What about, is Dan with a street sweeper?
No, Rich is.
That's Rich, Rich. Dan, thank you, appreciate it. Rich, that's sweet stripper, sweet.
Street sweeper.
Man, man.
Street.
Street, good Lord almighty, street sweeper. Do we really, honest to God, need it?
Oh, we do.
Oh, man, why can't you say no?
I mean, I have to be quite honest with you, it's nearing the end of its service life. I believe we have around 8,000 hours on the auxiliary engine, typically 10,000, you know, we're on borrowed time, around 10,000 hours. And, you know, we're putting, it's our only street sweeper that we have, we're doing over 600 and some streets, it's out daily, with the exception of weather conditions under 32 degrees, you know, so you're lucky most times that that sweeper's, you know, getting, for a community this size, only one street sweeper, that's a lot of work for one piece of equipment.
So why are we using it? Why?
Why are we using it?
Yeah, why? When we have rain that can wash the road clean, I mean, I can understand if you're over near a construction site, but we're getting to the point where we're almost residentially built out, really outside of a cell of a farm here, or a cell of a farm there, that's going to bring in new residential home. So why do we need that sweet stripper?
Oh, my gosh.
Did I say it wrong again?
Yeah, there you go. I mean, there's so much debris that's on our street, from, you know, sediment, stone, from people's driveways, to garbage, to leaves, you name it, it's unreal that, I mean, as I mentioned, for a community our size, to only have one street sweeper, you know, we're really pushing our luck. This thing's a, it's eight years old, if I believe, and, you know, also, we're getting to the end of its service life. We just recently, it's been hot for two weeks, we put $4,000 into a new turbo, and that's on the main engine. Typically, you get around 10,000, you're getting about 10,000 hours. We're over 8,000, I think it's, that's the 8,400 hours that we have on our street sweeper. Got me.
It's also one of those things, Eric, too. I always consider something like, you know, we're not plowing the streets in, you know, the summertime, residents see where, you know, their tax bases are being used, you know, they see the street sweeper go by, and like you said, maybe not as frequently as we like to, because we only have one, you know, and they see, you know, okay, our street's getting cleaned. As Richard said, you know, a lot of times, it will get debris from, especially the summertime or the fall with the leaves going on the road and whatnot, and it almost becomes a public safety, too, to get that stuff off the road.
But is that street sweeper pushing the leaves back into the people's yard?
No, it sucks them up.
It's a vacuum.
It's a vacuum.
It, you know, collects all the debris off the street. We've always purchased the street sweeper in the past, it's a very high, you know, very high-ticket piece of equipment, it's over $300,000 to buy, this is the first time, I mean, that's, yeah, that's the reality of it.
Here's what, the reason why I'm bringing all this up, man, and I don't mean to cut you off, but thank you, you know, everybody's trying to tighten the belt. The last thing we want to do is lose that surplus that we've had, right? We had a nice surplus. We still have it, it's decent.
Well, when I initially got on the board, I guess I'm the old one now, we had, we had a large surplus account, and what we were basically doing is, we were taxing the residents at that 10.2, 3 mil. We weren't spending all the money, and we had this large surplus amount. So when I originally got onto the board, we decided to lower the taxes, because in my opinion, and it was the board's pleasure at that time, it wasn't right to tax the residents to put money in the bank.
Sure. So you went from 10.3 to 9.23, dropping 1.4 mil.
Yep, and with doing that, we also came up with a plan, and Andy Blenka was here at the time, and he also explained to us, well, we're only paving X amount of roads, and it would take us probably about 30 years to get a road paved under our current theme at that point in time. And like I said, it was the board's pleasure at that time, and my own, if you're going to spend down the surplus, you do it on infrastructure, which is a one-time cost. You're not going to hire more staff for, create a project where you're going to have the recurring issue to pay that. So it was our plan to get down that surplus money, because it was the residents' money. And one thing the residents always notice, if, hey, my street just got paved, I see my tax dollars at work, when you see something like that. So that was our plan at that time, and that's where we kind of meet that impasse right now, where that money is depleted. At the time, too, I worked with manager Shepherd, it was my idea to have a fund balance policy, so we do have a rainy day fund. And as Jeff said, in that first quarter of the year, before we actually start getting tax money, we can use that surplus money to keep the bills going out until we get that revenue that comes in. That's why we're kind of in the position we're at now, we have to make difficult decisions. I understand, we talk about vehicles and things of that nature. I'm not saying that we can't debate spending money on vehicles, so we can, but it comes to me, if we put vehicles off to the next year, the next year, we could do that. Nine times out of 10, in my opinion, we'll be spending more money by waiting a few years, because you're going to put money into those older vehicles, like you said, maybe a turbo in a vehicle, or maybe a new transmission into a police cruiser, or things of that nature. And then we're going to go around and turn around and try to get one in a few more years, where we could have just put that money back into that new vehicle this particular year. I guess, we have to make difficult decisions moving forward. Like I said, if it comes, choosing on service levels, the different departments, or making a difficult decision of looking at, you know, our tax millage rate.
If I just made one point of clarification, where I think you're going to go, the spending from the capital account, which is the purple, does not affect the fund balance at all. That is a segregated account that has separate millage that goes right into that. So cutting the vehicles will not affect the general fund at all.
It would just allocate more money to spend on other capital purchases, because we're not adding money this year to the capital purchase fund. So basically, we're just spending the money that's allocated to there. So if we didn't buy, let's say, a new police vehicle, we would be buying maybe another truck for public works, you'd be just moving the money around somewhere else.
Understood. And Rich, what kind of number are we looking at on that street sweeper, if it's brand new?
Well, a brand-new model is over $300,000, although with the lease program, this is the first time Jeff and I, you know, did some research on this, Jeff's familiar with leasing vehicles, we thought this was, you know, to our advantage.
Financially, the lease.
Financially, the lease.
It's actually a lease purchase. You call it a lease purchase, because if governments take debt, we have to file what's called a government-owned unit debt act, and it goes through a long process with DCD. But to lease it and buy it at the dollar, DCD doesn't require that, because you're not owning it until, you're not, you don't have any debt on it, because you can give it back at any time. So that's why I, actually, at Robinson, I had the exact same scenario, they had a balance, they had a fund balance they were spending down, and you got to the point where, you know, they accomplished their goals. So the lease purchases work well to buy them, because you float out, you know, you finance for three to five years, depending what you're buying, and you get, and you're going to get more bang for your buck.
Right, as opposed to dropping 300,000 at one time.
Right, because we have 396,000 in the accounts, so if we buy that, that is all the capital equipment we buy for this year.
Right, okay.
As you just mentioned, the public works department, we're going big truck this year, and in my 25 years of service here, this is the first time that, you know, our department's gone about getting a large truck, only because of the circumstances, you know, this year. And we kept up with a capital plan, because years ago, we fell into this situation where we didn't get anything for the longest time. Some of our big trucks, they're on a cycle of like 15 years old. So, you know, we're going that truck, because we don't, in, you know, in the future, so we don't fall into the position where we have to replace so much equipment at one time. You know, we've come up with a capital in the past, we're going down this year, I think we'll be okay by doing so, but it's probably important that we continue to replace a lot of this stuff. Some of it may be still usable, but if we don't replace it now, we could fall into the situation down the road, where we have to replace that and other stuff all at once.
How much of your fleet do you keep under a roof? In other words, versus, how much is under a roof and protected on a daily basis from the elements, versus how much your fleet sits outside every day?
Every piece of equipment is out inside.
Okay, so that's going to give us life expectancy a little bit longer.
It does.
Right.
Although the type of work we do and being around the corrosive, corrosive, I mean, it's, it's still.
I know.
Things just rust, we take a long, hard look at our equipment, we try to, you know, do things to prolong.
Prolong, yeah.
I'll give you a quick example, like almost aluminum beds, it costs a little bit more upfront, but, you know, a regular steel bed, we figured out, we had to sandblast it payment because of the corrosive, like three times over its lifespan, so, you know, things like that.
Sure.
Try to be able to save.
Okay.
Still, the things that we need to do with the public works.
Okay, thanks, Rich.
And I'll say, last week, Dan, Jeff, and myself had a meeting with Dr. Taylor at the school district, again, trying to find different avenues to stretch the dollar, and we'll kind of see how that transpires, he's going to get back to us to see what other options we are to, again, maybe merge some of our parks and recreation with some of the facilities, what they have. And I'm also open to the ideas of sponsorships, naming rights for our township parks, recreational facilities, if, you know, I talked to Dr. Miller, he's looking at the idea of a outdoor stage or pavilion sort of for performances. I think it's a nice, easy thing for the township to low-cost, but get a nice end product out of it as well, so.
Any other board discussion on the budget? All right, I guess we can discuss a little bit more next week.
Okay, my next item is engineering proposals for the HVAC study, as we love to spend As I alluded to, I think in the August or the September meeting, you know, we're having the end-of-life cycle of our HVAC system, we have some major humidity issues, it's been looked at before, but we're basically at the time now, we have to come up with a program to replace it. So what I did is, I did release a comprehensive RFP in August that was due in September. We had nine firms pick up copies of the RFP, seven responded, we did an internal review of the seven companies, and realized that price isn't the sole determining factor on a professional service, but we had priced fees, these are, it's a lump sum RFP, ranging from $24,700 to $68,900. What we, we took those seven responses, and we reviewed it internally and came up with three finalists, McKimmon Creed from Pittsburgh, CGL Engineering from Johnstown, and AGC Professional Service from Murraysville, as these were kind of in the middle, low to middle of the pack, but they all had projects very similar to what we've had. We did interviews at the end of October with Assistant Manager Charlie and Director Fonzie and myself, we interviewed those three firms, and our unanimous selection was McKimmon Creed for the, for our recommendation. They are not only, they've had a lot of very similar experiences to ours, and they're currently finishing up one with the Peters Township Library, they come very highly recommended. As part of, as I put in the memo, as part of our process, we asked for the projected program manager or project manager to be involved in the interview. That person basically ran the interview from step one, with the principal sitting there, and also alluded that, you know, he is the heir apparent to be the regional manager, they have, they're on a business continuity plan, as he's, the principal is retiring. They are very skilled, we did reference checks, and it just so happened, they came in at the $24,700 price range. So what we'd like to do is recommend that they, that we put a motion on to engage them for the study and the process of HVAC replacement, you know, so they would do the study, then they'd come back to us with kind of some options, and from there, we would fish it out, to go to an RFP to replace the, or repair the boilers in HVAC.
Jeff, is that, what did you call that? The proposal?
Yes.
The recommendation, is the recommendation for $24,700, that's the recommendation fee, or that $24,700 includes making the corrections to what?
No, what that does is, that gives us the evaluation, it gives us options, and then it gives us bidding documents and taking it to bid.
And that's the $24,700?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just to clarify.
Yeah, that doesn't include any construction, that'd be bid out to another service, but that takes us through construction, you know, up through construction.
And then there's the cost after that for the replacing in the parts and?
Yes, and we don't, you know, we don't know what that, what that could be, but...
We're kind of in this situation, because we had litigation from the original designer of the system, I believe it was Tower Co., and the township settled on that lawsuit, which I opposed, because I wanted them to come in and actually fix the current system. The majority of the board at that time took that settlement. I don't know, Bruce, do you remember how much that settlement was for?
Why do I think, a 260-some thousand?
Yeah, I thought within that range, around 250, 260,000, the board at that time settled. So that's why we have a faulty system right now. And like I said, I opposed it at that time, it was the board's pleasure to accept the settlement. Reason I opposed it at that time, because I figured the purchase price for a new system, we're spending $25,000 just to have it come to we're spending $25,000 just to have a company come in and tell us how much money we need to spend on a future system. So, yeah, it's going to be a lot more than the 250 to 260,000 we got from the settlement.
So here comes another big hit.
Correct. But it needs done, unfortunately.
And I guarantee this is going to probably be upwards of $800,000. Cost of running a business.
I'll buy each of you a fan for Christmas. I promise.
Any questions on that proposal?
Okay, and the last one, I put it on just for planning, you know, for discussion purposes. Every year, we engage with the Westmoreland Transit System for their annual assessment for our bus stops within our township. It's $6,021. I don't have it in front of me right now, but it's, it's, we, they, for their state funding, they have to have X amount of local match. Without that payment, we would, they would not be able to serve with any, attach with any stops. It's been paid for every year. It's incorporated in the budget. And personally, I think it's a, it's a pretty good deal to get that service to our residents, to our businesses.
Well, they just put in that reparking lot.
Yeah.
By the way, that is a beautiful, that is so nice to see compared to what was there. I'm all, and you guys know, man, I am all about beautifying North Hounded Township. You know, we have a beautiful, we've got great schools, we've got a great township, we've got a great police department, we've got great everything. I just want the beauty to go with that and make it the most desirable township in all of Pennsylvania.
And that's all I have for this evening. Oh, wait, no, I have actually one more. Commissioner Stumpf asked if we can discuss fee and lieu allocations.
Yes, we have three parks that are currently being, getting, getting the fee and lieu payments. And I would like to see Westmoreland City Park added to that because that property has so much potential to have other things added to it and be an asset to the community.
I mean, I have, I'll be open to the idea. I know there's a lot of neighborhood parks, as we discussed before when we did the Parks feasibility study. And Manager Director Miller can interject if I'm stating it wrong, but the way that, I would say that the neighborhood parks are, I would say, dying. Most parents don't let their kids just go out and play at the ball field down the street. They take them to a park. And that's why we allocate a majority of that money to our premier centralized parks where people actually go and park and take their kids there versus the neighborhood parks. I think we do a good job of maintaining the neighborhood parks, but I don't think they get the attention as the destination parks do because of that.
And I would have to say, Virginia, since I've seen the influx of money going towards Lyons Park, the usership of that park has skyrocketed exponentially. And when you have nice community service projects like Shane's doing here, that's going to enhance it. But I think it's hard then to differentiate between, like Zach's saying, the neighborhood parks and the community parks. And I think the community parks is kind of the pathway that we're heading down right now. But again, that's why I mentioned, let's look at sponsorships. I mean, if there's something that you want at that park, you know, is Busy Beaver or somebody willing to put a sponsorship that we need something done, I have no problem for someone to pay us to put a sticker on top of their structure, you know?
That particular park has a lot of land that could be utilized, and that's why I bring it up.
Director Miller, would you, we just kind of take a look at it just and maybe bring this up to, you know, to consideration?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Stumpf, first of all, I applaud you for wanting to put more resources into our parks. Our parks have really become an asset, and as you all know, especially with the COVID. Keep in mind, fee and lieu is not, does not come out of the general fund. That's a developer-based fee program. It's no different than sponsorship. It's free money that you're getting from the homes that are built. Westmoreland City, that area down there, which is your ward, is built out. I don't see any new development or new homes going in there. The money that is going to fee and lieu now is Oak Hollow Park, Indian Lake Park, and now Lyons Park. I think the last development at Lyons Park might have been the Ryan Home Plan, or excuse me, the Dartmoor Estate, right? But your question or your concern about Westmoreland City, I did do a little research. We have roughly, and this goes back to when we were doing our comprehensive plan, that park is four acres, just a little over four acres, 4.02 acres. We currently are using, the use of that park with the baseball field, the outfield, the playground, the basketball court, is about 3.99999 acres. So there is very little, if any, of that woodlands behind us. As a matter of fact, when I looked on a property survey, that woodlands behind us was recently purchased by Mr. Sloss, I believe. There was two parcels behind the woodlands, and both of those are owned. So if you were to do anything to expand beyond that park, you'd probably have to buy some of that property from Mr. Sloss.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
That's all I have. All right. Planning and engineering topics, Director Fonzie?
Okay, there was just one item that came through the planning commission this month. And it's a one-lot subdivision, the Country Club Drive subdivision. And this is down on, excuse me, let me get the, here we go. Country Club Drive. This was a parcel that was originally created in 2014 by the Lincoln Hills Phase Eight Plan Number One subdivision. It was 5.64 acres, and the Hampton Inn and Suites Hotel was built on the eastern portion. The current owner, Erwin Hotel and Associates, is planning to subdivide to create the vacant Lot One, which is the blue parcel there. That is 2.45 acres. Now, they don't have any use lined up yet. They're basically doing this to market the lot. But by rules, they are creating the new lot. They have to get sewage planning approval from DEP. As of right now, WWMA and NHTMA are just wanting to see the one EDU. As a use is designated in the future, they will have to acquire more sewage planning based on the type of usage, whether it's restaurant or another hotel. So this was fairly straightforward. That would be the only condition is the sewage planning, and the planning commission did recommend it for approval. So does anybody have any questions on this?
Ryan, my one concern looking at this would be the side yard setback. So along the run to court, it looks like, I can't read, but it looks like 60 feet. And then backing the housing so that are already developed and established, it's 20 foot. Is that just standard practice for that?
You'll see, on a corner lot, you'll see the two front yard setbacks, which is, it's hard to read here. I think it's 50 feet on the, on the lot that's zone C1A. So the 20-foot side setback, that is standard for the C1A district.
Okay.
And there's going to be a shared access use. There's an easement for there. So any development that's going to be on Lot One is going to use the access that's already there, established on Lot Two. So we'll just require that the future owner has a reciprocal agreement to use that access.
Are you taking any other questions about anything else at this time?
Sure, hit me.
Okay. I hope I'm in the right by asking about this. The water runoff near Palarino's Car Wash, what are we doing about that?
That is a topic of litigation. We can't discuss that in open session.
And thank you very much.
All right. Old business. Ryan, you want to stay up there and maybe explain your memo for a second before you run off?
All right, let me get the, there's paper here. Okay, yeah, last month, the, looking at the backyard chicken keeping, the board had wanted to look at the conditional use option for the chicken keeping. So the first thing that would have to be done is the, the use table for residential district would need to be updated. To add that use, add it as a conditional use. Based on the prior ordinance versions that we had, I would recommend that we would amend the R2, R3, and R4 districts as a conditional use for chicken keeping. But when somebody comes through with one of these hearings, they're going to need a set of criteria that's established by the township that we're kind of basing this off of. So in my memo, I did give you some ideas to look at and how we want to, what standards we want to hold each applicant to. So again, it's a lot of similar items that were in the proposed ordinances from before. This would just be a different route. And I know that Jeff had done some research on the cost of the hearings, and I think you got his, his piece too, which, right now, our standard conditional use hearing fee is $750. But Jeff is saying the average cost of the advertisement is $340. So that's just to advertise it, I believe, twice within 20 days. And then we have to have a recorder fee, so, or a reporter fee. So we could either do that internally by having minutes taken, but you would still be looking at approximately a $350 fee.
You need to have a court reporter. You need to have a transcript.
Okay.
So I wouldn't do it by minutes. The reason is, is if it goes to court, you have to have that transcript.
So that's what we're looking at. So there's the cost involved with that and the advertising, which we, we have to do both. So again, it's up to the board to, you know, guide us in how you want to handle this. Or there's been plenty of options that have been talked about for several months now, so. Any questions? Any more discussion?
I would just like to say that I originally said that the best way to do this was by doing an ordinance and not going through this process. This is just too burdensome on staff, and it's too expensive for somebody that wants to have four chickens. And that's what we're talking about, four chickens. So I think the way to go on that is to have a regular ordinance and maybe a $50 fee. It would take a lot less paperwork.
I think having it this way is going to be less burdensome on staff. We discussed this. If you open it up to everybody, there's going to be more people applying to have chickens. This way, if you have the $750 fee, that's going to cut back on how many people put in. It's less burdensome. And then I'd just like to add, for the past three or four months, this has been the hottest topic. We've had people in here, month after month after month. Where are they at now? Is it still not important, it's not important to them now to come? That's what I don't understand. They were in here pushing everybody's buttons here, running up and talking to everybody after the meetings and wanting us to vote for them. But once we decided, once we said we were going to go this way, where are all these people? They don't care anymore. So is it really that big of an issue?
The people that I've talked to are not interested in having four chickens if it's going to cost them $750 to do it. And you don't charge somebody $750 to have two dogs. That's my point. And we have residents in this township that are low income, moderate income, and high income. And you can't discriminate based on somebody's income. And somebody that's low income doesn't have $750 to put in and apply for this. I would be, I'm opposed to going this route, but I still am for having a standard, fill out a quick little application with your $50 fee and be done with it. And I don't think that people are going to have chickens that don't want to have chickens. I think, like Penn Township, they might have 100 or 200 people that are interested in having chickens out of all of the people that we have in the township. And the people in the upscale subdivisions can't have them anyways, so.
I'm going to go back and say earlier, now I was wrong because Mr. Rick Keenan was sitting here. So 16 people got in touch with me through phone calls, text messages, and emails. 16 out of Ward Seven. 15 of the 16 said yes to chickens, hens, female hens, no roosters. And I asked those 15, are you guys going to have chickens? Every one of them said no. Mr. Keenan was only against it because Mr. Keenan had been around chickens when he was a kid. And I failed to mention, recognize Mr. Keenan's objection to the hens, to the chickens. So when I had 16 people, 15 people getting in touch with me, I neglected to put Mr. Keenan down as one of those people in Ward Seven. Again, I had 15 out of 16 people say yes to the chickens. When asked about those 15 people, not one of them said that they wanted the chickens nor were they going to have them, but they just felt it was right to offer it to the people in the community that wanted it. And that is why I voted the way that I did. So I have to represent my people.
I think rather than reopening the debate between the ordinance versus the conditional use, we have to look at the fee structure that's just involved in this. So it's, are you happy with this cost? And I feel that if it's going to cost the township X number of dollars, we have to charge the resident that, that fee. So the township should not incur an expense because someone wants to have the chickens. So I don't want to go back into the can of worms of, you know, pros and cons, pros of cons, ordinance versus conditional use. What's the amount that would be at a cost to the township? That's, I think, the question we're looking at here.
I mean, I think I'm the one that kind of proposed going this route. And I said I didn't want to accrue any of that cost on the township. So, I mean, if we're saying that the cost advertised is 350, and from Bruce's recommendation, it's beneficial for us to have the court reporter here. Even just say 350 and 250, and that's your cost there. I don't want to charge the residents anymore, but I do not want to use taxpayers' money to pay for someone to have the backyard chickens. So, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with, you know, doing that cost and moving forward with that if Ryan's comfortable making the adjustments we need to, the Saldo. And at least that way, it's a case-by-case basis on everyone that's coming to propose to have, you know, chickens in their backyard.
Is there a way that we could schedule them all on the same day and they could split the cost?
I think we have, we had applications come in. As far as the court reporter, I don't know if they charge you different fees for every time, but as far as.
They charge you a fee every time.
Yeah. As far as publishing for the advertisements, it would have to be the same cost structure.
Yeah, every hearing is a separate standalone hearing, even if it's all on the same day. She doesn't charge us a sitting fee. It's, you know, per hearing.
I would agree with what Zach said too, with just keeping this, whatever it costs us is what we charge them for the fee.
We have to charge them because you guys often go the conditional use route. See, that's where you guys, by, by you guys pushing the issue of conditional use, you put the financial burden onto the township as opposed to the ordinance where there wouldn't be this financial burden. So you guys, you want your cake and your ice cream too. That's my point with this. You guys did this to us when you said, let's do it for conditional use. And you have to understand and you have to accept the fact that this is your responsibility. This is your burden to carry because you guys insisted on conditional use.
It's not our burden to carry, Eric. I mean, I don't know if we want to get into the whole debate again, which we can. I'm sure we're kind of going down that road. But we talk about compromise. I was willing honestly to compromise to one acre. And that was a lot for me because I'm totally against the chicken thing in the backyard. I was eight, 10 years ago, and I still am. But I thought this was a compromise that we could do. That way, it's case-by-case basis of maybe someone that lives on a half an acre, we have the public here, and their neighbor comes up and testifies for them and says, yeah, I'd be glad for them to have chickens. That's great. Let them have chickens on the half an acre. But that way, it's a case-by-case basis. Like I said, I was willing to compromise to an acre, and at the board's pleasure, the acre was not good enough. So this is the direction that I suggest that we go. I mean, if it's a board's pleasure to go forward down this direction, we can, or we can have the big debate again, and maybe some people will come up with their chickens and pray them around the townhouse. Who knows?
I like what we have here, what we discussed, the conditional use and the amount we have in here, the recommendation. I say we just stick with that. That's what we voted on last time.
Brian, you said you're comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
I'd rather have a policy.
Virginia, you want, going back to the ordinance yourself?
I think it's prudent, I believe, for the township and for the homeowner to just have the ordinance. And if you're done with it, they pay a $50 fee, and everybody's happy.
I think we voted on this last time.
We voted explorative direction. I believe it was a six-to-two vote or whatnot. But, I mean, obviously, people's opinions and, you know, can change over the course of time.
So if I'm reading this right, the memo from Jeff, the charge to advertise is 340, and the charge for the court reporter is 250, so that, that total would be 590.
Correct.
Wouldn't be the 750.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that'd be 590. We would have to public. We would have the public hearing, and at that time, you know, the board could ask questions. Like I said, our neighbors could testify since it would be, you know, on public record. In that way, it's case-by-case basis versus just a blanket ordinance for, you know, the whole community to go with. Are you nodding, saying that you're comfortable with that or nodding that?
I am comfortable with it. I, I would support the, this conditional use.
All right, so if I'm not mistaken, there's four votes there. Not that we took a vote, but consensus of the board, so if we want to move down this direction.
We'll look at updating the use table and.
Yeah, and we can move in that direction, and if we get calls about chickens, Jeff, you can let the residents know what direction we're going, and if we get calls, we can let them as well.
Okay.
Just, just for clarification, we'll put on an action to authorize the amendment of the, of the conditional use tables at the next meeting, then we'll do it through December.
Break the fee structure and whatnot, yep.
Okay, thanks.
Any further board comments? Not seeing any, just need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion, all unfair by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed, being adjourned at 9:14.